Good evening. Welcome to Joplin School Board Meeting tonight on this November 27th. We are now doing a work session tonight. We're starting at 5:30, so if you're tuning into us, yes, it is 5:30 and yes, we are live. We're going to call to order this meeting first and then we're going to start in on a tax increment financing, a TIF update. Call to order?
No, I don't either.
You want to do roll call?
Mr. Steele.
Present.
Mr. Flowers.
Here.
Ms. Sharpe.
Present.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Here.
Mr. Landis.
Here.
Mr. Will Thompson.
Here.
Thank you. This time I'll turn it over to Dr. Huff and you want to take it? You want to call Bart?
Yeah, I'll start.
Okay.
This evening, we're going to be visiting, spending this entire work session talking about the TIF proposal that's been presented to us by the City of Joplin and want to start by saying and apologizing to the Board. We haven't had a lot of time to review this issue. Appreciate the availability of school board members who have taken the time to be a part of some of the meetings that have happened over the course of the last six weeks or so. But this school district, as I understand it, was founded in, what year, 1871 or two, I believe, and the issue before this Board of Education, this particular issue is probably the biggest single decision that's been made by any school board, sitting school board in the history of this school district. And so the magnitude of the decision is a big one. The timeframe that we have to really truly analyze, the impact of this proposal on the school district is short. I can tell you that we're working a lot of hours trying to keep up with the information that's coming our way. Appreciate Jeff. He was at a meeting yesterday that Paul will get into. I know Dawn's been involved in some of the meetings and Randy's made himself available a lot of times and all of you have been fielding questions in the community related to the timeframe that we're working within and a lot of questions regarding the TIF and how it impacts the school district as well as our bond issue that we recently passed, student enrollment, growth projections, a lot of really important questions. So we have a very limited amount of time to review and analyze. And we've been working hard. We've made good progress in the last week and appreciate Paul Barr's effort on a number of levels to analyze the details of the proposal as well as offering up solutions, potential solutions, so we can partner with the city and continue this rebuild effort in a positive direction. But with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Paul and we'll talk some more. Feel free to continue eating. Paul's going to cover a number of pieces related to the post-TIF and then we'll open the floor up for questions and have some discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Huff. I wanted to echo Dr. Huff's comments that Joplin Schools is very excited about the redevelopment we see happening in Joplin currently and about the possibilities this TIF project could bring to Joplin. So, and as everyone knows, our patrons were good enough to pass a bond issue last April and we really considered that we were on the front end of the rebuild effort with the three building sites that are taking place now in the Joplin area. I do want to introduce Bill Moore with King Hershey, sitting next to me across the table there, and he is assisting the district in the TIF commission work that we have before us. So if you have questions tonight, please feel free to ask Bill. We'll go ahead and get started here. We did put out a position paper, if you will, November 16. We recapped our summary issues for everything we've learned to date as of November 16 and tonight, we're basically, we've been working with the city and the city likewise in a good faith effort. However, our two key challenges remained from that November 16 memorandum. That is to say, what does the current TIF proposal mean for Joplin Schools? Challenge number one, it means the immediate loss of revenue, and I can explain it as it's noted there in the lower left corner. The TIF, the way they operate, they freeze the base assessed valuation that you have in a, what would be a TIF zone. The City Council passes this. We are frozen at that level of assessed valuation for the life of the TIF. In this case, it would be 23 years. Where we have an issue there of a loss of revenue is our beginning number is, we have a depressed assessed valuation because the tornado has taken it down in that area of an estimated $34 million that transfers to a loss of revenue of $1.2 million approximately annually because of the depressed lowered assessed valuation caused by the tornado. If the City Council passes the TIF, then it would attach, we'd be in that lowered valuation zone for 23 years, missing that $1.2 million. And to the city's credit, they've been working closely with us on that for some time and there's a possible solution that could address that first challenge that we're still working through. Challenge number two is the one that's a little, it's more of an if-then scenario because none of us has a crystal ball. With a successful TIF, we would assume that redevelopment would come and most of what's being proposed would happen and be successful. What that could bring as a part of the success would be more people to Joplin and more students with these families, especially if approximately 1,600 to 2,000 residences might be built in the TIF zone. And what we're looking at down the road is that we want to avoid an unintended negative consequence of having students coming with their families, living in the TIF zone area for which we get no more local taxes in the residences they live in, in that area. And it could be perhaps, we show a chart there of buildings, we could have a lot of families and students move in there that could justify as much as three schools. If you look at the bottom of that chart, it could be very few move in there. Maybe it's going to be primarily retirees or assisted living and maybe they don't have school-aged children. That's a possibility, in which case that would be a non-item, zero, effectively zero new students, not requiring any new building. So the two outliers there, the three schools and the zero schools are probably the more unlikely possibilities. The more likely possibilities could bring one school or two schools' worth of students into that TIF zone for which there is no additional local taxes to contribute to our budget while we find a place to house those students and deal with that accelerated growth that could take place in the TIF zone. I'd like to repeat, if there is no growth, no new students coming to that zone, this chart, this challenge would be a moot issue. But we don't have crystal balls. We have to project and set aside monies and plan for possibilities and eventualities, so that's why we're having this discussion. The other part of that chart is to show that for every new student we take, we teach that comes into the TIF zone and we take them into one of our existing schools, say, while the first 50 or 60 come in, just as an example, we absorb them in our area elementary schools that are already standing. We have a cost to educate that child, new to the TIF zone, residing in the TIF zone, and we pull the actual cost of Cecil Floyd Elementary, that's a school built for 600, and the actual cost for South Middle School enrollment, which is a little over 600. And you see there the annual cost in terms of local tax dollars it takes to educate an elementary and middle school child.
Well, Paul, I want to break in here, just to reiterate the local tax dollars. We get federal funds, we get some state revenues that come in to support our student growth as that comes on through the foundation formula and through federal funding. And that has been withdrawn from that number and we're looking at specifically local tax dollars that be generated within the TIF zone as it applies to what it costs to educate a single child that were to move into that zone.
Thank you, Dr. Huff. And so, again, let's just take an example to illustrate a point. Let's say there's just a negligible amount of students that move into the TIF zone area. So on building-wise, we might be looking at no buildings for 23 years because that's just the way it falls perhaps, primarily retirees or assisted living or something. For whatever students do move into that zone and live there, again, that local tax levy is not going to be collected and go to the schools for that to contribute to their education. So we are pointing out as part of this challenge number two, there's a cost there for those students that we'd have to bear without the corresponding local tax revenue that we're asking the city to partner with us on to resolve that issue. We would have the children to educate, we would incur the cost, but that amount of revenue would not be there to educate that child. So two issues there in challenge two. One's kind of a brick and mortar building issue and the other is the cost to educate the child, which really bears out in the teacher, the staffing cost, classroom aids, utilities, maintenance, that sort of thing, is what the annual cost represents, what it takes to run a school. We've had TIF discussions with the city to date and have participated in the tax increment. The TIF Commission has two seats and the 11-member commission, of which the city does appoint six city seats to that commission, appoints two school district, two county, and one special road. Since we received the first draft cost-benefit analysis October 3rd, we've studied that judiciously, worked with Bill Moore and John Nicholas and trying to marshal everything we can to get in there and ask the questions to provide the Board of Education the peripheral vision it needs and the foresight it needs to be looking broadly and down the road as many as 23 years, that's the life of the TIF, to be able to encounter anything that may come from the TIF, the school district way, so that we can deal with that. Our primary goal in having these discussions is to maintain our budget as promised. And when we say maintain, we're not looking for $1 more than what we had before the storm. We had a budget that supported 7,600 students, thereabouts, and most of our students are back and our teachers are intact. And that's what we're trying to do is maintain that budget because we're, as we explained in challenge one, we're at low assessed valuation. It hasn't come back yet and the TIF could attach it at a low point and we don't want to stay in that, at that low point for 23 years. So we need to protect our students, meaning we do not want to cut staff further. We went into this storm with a lean staff, had just come through budget cuts and staff reductions due to the national great recession back in 2008. So we positioned ourselves well, but we're lean and we need to stay that way. That's one tool we have available to us, is to cut budget, and we don't see that as a real option with what we're facing. The other tool we have is if we can't cut budget and save expenses, the only other tool the school district has is to raise the levy or raise another bond issue, and that would be done by a vote of the public. We cannot do that on our own, board action, and we want to avoid that also for things that the TIF could generate and encumber our budgets for. So we don't, all we have is those two tools, manage the budget, cut where you can, and ask your public to support you on an operating levy or a bond levy, a building levy if you need it. So that really is the sum of our toolbox, those two items. Therefore, we want to protect our students by not having class sizes rise due to staff cuts or budget cuts. And we want to protect the taxpayers from a request for a tax increase that could come from this TIF if we're not able to resolve these issues with the city upfront. So we have been working through these issues and we're confident we can resolve them. We're all on a tight timeline. We made some progress, but the two big challenges remain. Questions thus far? We'll give you kind of an update of the outcome of discussions with the city to date. You see the timeline there. I alluded to, we first received the draft plan from the city October 3rd. The city organized the TIF Commission following that and had the first TIF Commission meeting October 12. I alluded to our November 16 summary of key points that we distributed to the TIF Commission and the city November 16, which is really where we're at today. We've had discussions since then, but we, the two big challenges I outlined earlier were outlined in that November 16 paper and we have not gotten those resolved yet. Have made some progress though. November 21, the city presented a proposal, deemed its final proposal, to address the summary of issues. One of the items in that city proposal was that the TIF will not exceed 23 years, no extensions, which I know participated on the TIF Commission, that's gotten quite a bit of discussion during the TIF Commission meetings and a number of commissioners can appreciate that because I think if I'm right, Bill, a city could have phased-in projects or certain things could trigger the 23-year period to go out to as much as 10 years further if certain things happen. Is that correct, Bill?
That's correct.
But the city is committing to that not taking place here and having this end not to exceed 23 years. So that's a good development. The TIF Commission has also had quite a bit of discussion about if the project is very successful whereby the projects are built, maybe they're built in a shorter timeframe than what was anticipated, if it gets some inertia and success going early, that if there is excess surplus revenues in the TIF redevelopment pool, that any excess revenues be applied first toward the debt service to service the bonds that will be issued to help fund this project, pay down the bonds as early as possible, save interest, and finish that part of the TIF activity.
Just for clarity again, Paul, those are TIF bonds, not school district bonds?
Those are, that'd be issued by the, I believe, Bill, would that be the Joplin Redevelopment Corporation would issue those bonds or what body?
Well, I could be city bonds.
City bonds, okay.
They'd issue their TIF bonds.
So the city would issue TIF bonds that would help bring investment to the community because, as they've explained to us, and that's a local bond scheduled for $42 million. And for an $800 million project, $42 million doesn't sound like a lot, but five or seven percent of what we're told is what it takes to get developers' attention to come in and invest millions because they're seeing the city put in as low as 5 percent, but they feel more comfortable when that happens. And that can go towards some curb and gutter and storm sewers and the types of things developers would rather the city pay for. So that's a catalyst seat money that attracts investment. But again, the TIF Commission, and we certainly support to, if there is surplus funds, and there isn't always surplus funds, because that's only if the project succeeds that we pay down debt first and then the remaining surplus funds be distributed out to special roads, Jasper County, City of Joplin, Joplin Schools, all the taxing districts. If there's additional surplus funds in this 23-year period after bonds are paid off, we'd like that money to flow back to the taxing districts so they could basically be receiving the revenue that's coming in that's no longer needed for the project because they've been completed. So that's a positive scenario that could develop and the Tax Commission and Joplin Schools is looking to, looking forward to this being a part of the TIF plan design if the TIF is successful. That would be a real plus for us. So we appreciate that position by the city. The last point in their November 21 proposal was a discussion of Joplin Schools' challenges, number one and number two, that I went through earlier in the process here. The city has offered for some time a $12 million as part of a solution to go toward challenge one and two. So that's in the discussion phases. That's been out there for some time and we do appreciate that as a good faith offer. We're not, we're still analyzing the offer to see how much of challenge one and two it may meet. We don't think, as we look at it this evening, it meets the challenge of both, but we did, we are studying it further and in talks with the city.
Is that restricted or unrestricted funds?
If those, if that money came into us, I believe the accounting rules would allow us, if it came through a pilot, to apply it to any fund we would need to apply it to. So in that sense, I think it'd be unrestricted. We'd put the money where we saw the biggest need.
It also depends upon where the money comes from. Depending on whether or not it's federal funds that are earmarked for specific types of projects, it could have an impact on us as well. So it just depends on whether it's just straight cash with no strings attached or if it's, let's say, CDBG funds or some other funding source that may come from the feds that would have some strings attached to it. So I'm not sure where that's, that funding's going to come from yet. I don't know if we've gotten clarity on that yet or not.
I don't think there's a number of funding sources the city's putting together to help in this process. And, but, and by the way, when we say money coming to the schools, it's basically, I mean, the schools are putting in roughly 77 to 80, close to 80 percent of the total revenue in this entire project on a local basis. So that any money coming back to the schools would just be basically a flow-through back to the schools because of the amount of funds the school's putting into this project to make it work according to the plan. Bill Moore, would you have any comment on the way we might receive those funds and how flexible and unrestricted they could be?
No, I think at this point, we don't have enough information to really know how those flows. I think as Dr. Huff indicated, if those funds do come from specific sources like CDBG, those would have some strings attached to it. If it's just a distribution of TIF revenues, then perhaps those would be unrestricted. I think that's yet to be determined by the city and the developer.
Yes, thank you, Paul.
I have a question about the city's proposal about the TIF not to exceed 23 years. So does that mean 23 years from when the TIF originates or does that, or is it still if a project starts five years down the road, they have 23 years after the start date of that project? Is that what's changed?
Bill, would you like to comment on that?
The 23-year we refer, I refer to as the TIF clock begins at the adoption of an ordinance approving a project. So I think what they're proposing is that, say, for example, they adopt an ordinance in 2012 that also triggers the TIF clock, then it would be 23 years from that point forward.
Okay, so not when the project starts down the...
Not when the project physically starts, it's when the ordinance is adopted to trigger the TIF.
Okay.
One thing with that too, and maybe I don't want to cloud the issue, but the super TIF legislation that comes with that, my understanding is it has a different set of guidelines which would supersede some of the other, you know, related to that, you know, that when that ordinance is passed and that it really draws a line in the sand at 23 years and doesn't allow for an extension beyond that. So one of the questions, you know, if the city passes a local TIF, as you implied, it could go beyond 23 years although they've indicated that they wouldn't allow that to happen. But the super TIF legislation as it's currently being written, as I understand it, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, my understanding is, is that that 23-year deadline will be, that will be a final deadline. It doesn't matter if the project started in year '22. When that 23rd year gets here, it's over.
Dr. Huff, I think that is correct with respect to the bill that was introduced last year. The super TIF was, would only be good for a 23-year period. Now, what I'm not certain is whether or not that would necessarily prevent a local TIF from going forward beyond the 23 years. But the super TIF itself, I think, as it was written, was only for a 23-year period.
Which has been a negotiating point and something we've been talking about and indications are, is the city is willing to acknowledge that at the end of 23 years, the TIF's over. All projects need to be completed and done in 23 years.
So just to recap, the third point of that November 21 offer did address challenge one and two, but we'll go back to that slide here in a minute. But the sum of that challenge one and two is quite a bit more than that $12 million offer and we'll come back to that. But we did meet yesterday with the city and Wallace Pajali to discuss a proposal that they did bring to, that they do, we did talk about today. Again, the $12 million was discussed and ongoing challenges and we're trying to hone in on that challenge one and two and be open-minded and negotiate and discuss in good faith because we all want this redevelopment plan to happen. As David Wallace mentioned, the developer, Master Developer, and Mr. Doug Dole, the Chairman of the TIF Commission, that made a reference to a high tide should raise all boats so that we basically all lock arms and go forth on this and not leave anyone taxing district wanting for problems that inadvertently have negative unintended consequences coming back on a taxing district for what was adopted by City Council in 2012. Lastly there, I did say we met today with, and discussed further. Next steps, Dr. Huff, do you want to pick it up from here?
Sure, I'm sure, Ken. We have been having, obviously have been having continued discussions with the city. We've been having discussions for quite some time. Those discussions continue. We have a TIF Commission hearing scheduled for tomorrow. TIF Commission meeting scheduled for tomorrow, I believe at noon, City Hall. Currently, there's a public hearing that is scheduled for November 30th, as it says up there, this coming Friday, where the public can come and make their, if they have questions or comments, they can come at that time and voice those opinions. And then as far as when a decision, according to the city, has to be made, has to be made by December 31st of this year. And there, I believe, is a two-week window following the public hearing so that the last date of the TIF Commission hearing could take place where actual decision would be made is December 14th, I believe.
When is the December 31st such an important date?
Paul, do you want to talk about that, the December 31st date and why that's so important to the city?
Yes, the December 31st date, it's not, it's just, it's a self-imposed date. The City Council, the city is looking at to have this work done and have the City Council conclude with a vote on the TIF, as I believe was stated last night in public information session by David Wallace. The reason is, as we all know, Jasper County, like every other county in the state of Missouri, assesses the first day of any new calendar year is the date they assess your property, your house, your car, that sort of thing. So when January 1 of 13 rolls around, there'd be a new assessment date geared toward the 1st of 13 and the values from 2012 that are lower will rise by virtue of the completed structures and redevelopment you see out there. So that increase in the assessed valuation that will occur, 1/1 of 13, well, the developer has described, will take significant money out of the TIF redevelopment finance package and could put it in jeopardy, as I believe is how he's describing. So that's why they are, they are looking at December 31 to wrap this up with the City Council vote because of that description.
Does that mean we lose out on the assessed valuation of everything that's been built this year?
Well, as last night Brian Head City Attorney described his visit with Jasper County Assessor Office, he was given a date of August 12. And Bill, correct me if I misstated here, but August 12 is what the county assessor pointed to as a date for commercial property completed by. And there's a, Jasper County's and Occupancy County, so for houses and that, it goes by when you occupy your residence. So the example he gave, if you occupy your residence November 21st, that's the date for that residence. If you occupy your new residence December 25th, that would be the date that would go on the tax roll. So the residence...
So it's just prorated for the 12 months for the assessed valuation of the property?
It's, no, it goes by August 12, completed commercial, on or off. And as you occupy your house, you're on or off as of that date.
And I think that if the decision's made, let's say hypothetically, the council got together on 12/31 and made the decision, they'd actually capture, if I'm not mistaken, Paul, the entire month's worth of, if they, anything that happened prior to December 1. Maybe I have this wrong, but that month, anything that happened that month might be collected.
I do, in working with the county assessor's office through the storm, it did seem like they tried to batch, you know, one month's activity a month at a time. So it could be correct. But Mr. Landis, there would be a lot of assessed valuation that we see around us, maybe, and permits are on right now, if they got this done in December, that would go into the TIF.
Right.
And that's the impetus, as David Wallace explained last night in public information session, that's why they...
Does anybody have a, do we have an approximate number on that?
No.
Value?
No. But that's why they want to have this...
The city doesn't have that number, what they have issued out there?
I'm not sure what the city has, Mr. Landis, but that'd be, you know, the county assessor I know is, I've asked the county assessor, working diligently, to try to, back to slide, challenge number one, that $34 million that's causing that loss of revenue there, that's an estimate on our part. But we don't have a GIS system with all these parcels plotted and we don't know the values. That's a Jasper County assessor and we're working closely with her. She, I've asked her to verify our estimate. Could be high, could be low, but that's what we have to go with for now because no one else has an estimate on ours. have to go with for now, because no one else has an estimate on ours.
So the funding they say they're going to lose, that's from the city's standpoint? Or you said if it's not done by December thirty-first, they're going to lose funding?
Well, they would lose assessed valuation of all those properties, it'd be reassessed January one of thirteen.
Right.
So that means that would not be in the TIF, everything you see.
Which would be advantageous for the school district, because we would want the higher assessed value if it didn't be held at it.
And as, the revenue that would have been generated by those properties would be swept into the, into the TIF zone instead of coming to the school district, yes.
And then, do they not have any other funding sources besides this TIF?
That's a great question. I know I asked that in a meeting with the city, and the answer was, that was reviewed, delegated to Wallace Pajali, and I haven't put that question to Wallace Pajali, but I haven't heard mention of any other tools. I do, and I know there are a number of tools the city could utilize, some take a vote to utilize and some do not, but certainly there's, there's a toolbox with multiple tools in it for the city to do redevelopment and incite, incent investors to invest in the community. This is not the sole tool. This tool, though, used for this purpose, I believe, Dr. Huff, there was a recent reference to the St. Louis Post-Dispatch, that this would be the biggest TIF in the history of the state of Missouri.
We have the St. Louis Post-Dispatch article I sent to you all yesterday, I think it referenced the St. Louis TIF as being the largest TIF zone in the state of Missouri at two square miles, and this will be at four-point-eight miles, close to five miles square. So significantly larger TIF zone, very complicated, as you, as you've heard. The residential side is what obviously concerns us to the greatest degree, simply because we're getting no new tax revenue off of the residential housing that's coming in to support the children that come with it. And that's, that's the problem, that's the hang-up. And if it wasn't for the residential side, we could probably, we probably would have had this problem solved weeks ago, but this is, this has been the biggest, I think, challenge for, from my viewpoint anyway, is dealing with this huge residential TIF zone that's been created above and beyond just the damaged area. So we're, we're struggling with that, and that's, that's what's created the challenge for us.
Do you know of any other funding sources? I mean, this is your, what you do?
Well, there are, and I think as far as mentioned, there is multiple other funding sources that could be used. I'm not aware of any others that are being proposed for this development.
Okay.
But, but yes, that's, that is a good question. Thank you. The, nationally, I don't know, Bill, how does this size rank? Do you work on any national TIFs? But it's, wouldn't it be regarded as a large TIF even nationally?
I don't know for certain, but I would guess at four-point-eight miles, it'd be, it'd have to be one of the larger ones. I mean, and obviously, it's, you know, Missouri does a lot of TIFs.
Right.
And if this is the largest in the state of Missouri by...
Almost double?
Almost double. That's pretty significant.
Dr. Huff mentioned that the...
Almost triple.
The real estate component of this is what makes this so large and different. I mean, there were a couple of TIFs adopted by the city back in the early two thousands, and neither one of those, they were just small commercial developments. That's, I think that's much more common, or that might comprise, I talked to the State Economic Department some weeks back, and I think I got a number of, half or more of the TIFs are just commercial only, but a fair amount do have residential, but a smaller percentage have majority residential. And I'm not quite sure if this is majority residential or not, but it sure puts the, that challenge number two, because of the residential factor, that's why we're addressing this challenge number two. We do not have the residential component here, and we're just talking, bringing new businesses to town, that business might relocate in the, in the TIF zone, or, well, they wouldn't, if there was no residential component, there'd be no incentive to, and we still receive our real estate taxes, but those people could live in some bedroom community around here and work in that new business. There's not nearly the new influx of residences, citizenry, and students in a commercial redevelopment, yes, for the jobs for that new business, but not on the scale of sixteen-hundred or two thousand, whatever the number could be with this one. That would take, that would be a huge employer to pull that many people into town.
And related to challenge number two, I just want to reiterate, you know, Paul's slide there, I mean, our goal is to be able to respond to whatever growth occurs, whether it's zero growth or significant sizable growth, we've got to be able to respond to it. And we're talking about what just, what happens just within the site, within, what happens inside the TIF zone. Outside the TIF zone, and we've been dealing with that type of growth, you know, the new revenue that comes with it, you know, budgeting appropriately, if we need to hire new teachers, we hire new teachers. If we need to move a teacher to a different building because of class size shifting that happens, you know, in normal, in normal operations, we do that, we know how to do that, and we always have. Our struggle again is, you know, what, what do we do if? Because this board, me as the superintendent of schools, Paul as CFO, as we analyze this, we're making a decision that's going to impact, you know, two generations of kids, basically, that are going to be going through our schools. My three-year-old will graduate from, from high school before this TIF is over, and we've got to do this right. And, you know, twenty-three years from now, I don't know that there'll be very many of the same faces around this table. At least I hope I'm not, I'm not here, because that'll be, that'll be a lot of years.
You won't remember it anyway.
What's that? I won't remember it anyway. But, but the reality of it is, it's a big decision. We, we have been given a lot of information, we've received information as late as a little after four o'clock this afternoon, haven't had time to analyze it and get ready for a school board meeting. We're not ready to make a recommendation to this board that we feel comfortable with, that we feel confident is the right thing to do for, for our district, going back to our original comment about protecting our students and protecting our taxpayers. It's, it's a long-term decision. Most TIFs that we've dealt with in the past, five years, seven years, ten years, in, in the TIFs, and we have, we have been supportive of TIFs in the past from an economic development standpoint. And Paul has a lot more history here than I do, but I've been involved in several of those conversations since I've been here. But it's been, it's been TIFs associated with, maybe with new equipment, associated with a, a business that's doing an expansion to bring in more jobs and good-paying jobs. And we can, we support those types of things from an economic development standpoint. What's unique, again, with this TIF, is the size of the TIF, it's huge, it's big, and the number of residential housing units that are associated with the TIF that are going to generate anywhere from, I think the recent numbers, point-three-eight students per household up to who knows what, depending on who, who the city markets to, and what types of families are attracted to the, to the, to the things that'll be happening in that area, you know, the parks and the foreign arts center and, you know, library and all those pieces that are being proposed. So it really creates a challenge for us, and, you know, from a growth projection standpoint, you know, we're trying to redraw boundary lines right now for elementary enrollment to, to address what's changed since the tornado. Well, that, that's, talk about needing the crystal ball, we don't, we don't have it. The city doesn't have it, we don't have it, we all acknowledge that, but we have to, you know, plan for worst-case scenario and develop, build enough flexibility into this TIF plan so that meets our needs over the next twenty-three years, and that none of you have to look somebody in the eye fifteen years from now if you're not on the board, when another board member comes to you and says, why did you do that? And, and you have to answer the question, that, that tough question, and you guys got to be able to feel comfortable with that. And the best thing that could happen is we, we get this thing resolved and it's buttoned up tight, and, and that question never has to be asked because the district's protected.
I think it's also kind of important to point out that we're not afraid of growth and increased enrollment. The difference is, is that if we don't have a TIF, that increased enrollment is, is married with increased property taxes that are coming in to pay for that, and that helps, it helps in a variety of ways. And so it's something that, this isn't a bad thing to have increased enrollment, it's just that the tools that are normally there that help pay for that and help the school district respond to that like we normally do are not there.
I had a question asked me today, do you really anticipate growth? This week I was in one of our elementary schools, and they was enrolling three kids that they were moving in Joplin from outside of a community. We're having new kids enrolled still in our schools today, so what's going to happen down the line when that growth is really taking place? And that's what, I mean, that's, we can't predict that right now, but we've got still enrolling new students right now in our district.
Until these new buildings open and new high school, that, that, people are going to want their kids there.
Yeah.
On the, on the cost analysis benefit that there was in some of the paperwork we got, did I not see, I didn't see anything about the impact on the school district? Did I miss it? Did I not find it?
No, I think Ms. Sharp...
The economic impact on our district, was it in there?
The cost-benefit analysis, I think, did exclude the issues we're bringing up this evening.
Okay.
About what is the impact to the local schools? If we attach a depressed, reduced assessed valuation, what's the impact? What's the impact if, challenge number two, we have some success there in pulling new students? So we evaluated the plan, we saw that was not in there, and we brought that to the attention of the city and the TIF Commission, and indicated that we needed to talk through that. Again, we all want the redevelopment to succeed, but we all need to have our broad vision glasses on with some foresight, as well as the county and special roads, and look, look fully at this and see what impacts the different taxing districts and bring those up now. Part of the tax increment, the TIF Commission discussion has been, if there is a shortage of funds to do everything that the TIF redevelopment would want to do, or to resolve any issues, say, that we're trying to resolve here with the city that may fall short, we did ask, is there a priority of projects on the list of nineteen projects, I believe totaling eight-hundred-six million? Is there a priority list associated with, with which projects come first and beyond through nineteen? I've heard a lot of the discussion about the library theater complex, so now, I know that's near the top of the list, but it could be that if the TIF revenue does not go far enough to meet needs that the city would want to meet ours and others up front, as we're discussing, that the low end of that priority list, you know, there could be some projects trimmed off to free up revenue to help solve some problems on the front end, if that's, I don't, I don't, you know, we never got an answer that everything's locked in stone, has to happen, all nineteen, I know that's a desire, but if we're at loggerheads on, you know, on how to solve some issues up front that need some revenue, we could review, not we, but there could be a review of that list and priority and see, could there be some projects deferred, taken off, what have you? Another possible solution to a problem. I know, Dr. Huff, in that November sixteen memo we put out, we put out our summary of challenges, and we put out possible solutions to those challenges also, so that's, that's why I bring this up, as part of our earlier TIF Commission discussion.
I do appreciate the, the information we've been getting and what our challenges are and the solutions that you offer with them. That's, that's always a nice way to approach things, so I appreciate you doing that.
We're trying, this is the city, I mean, this is very complicated, and it's, it's hard work, it's tedious work, it's new territory for all of us. We didn't ask for this thing to happen on May twenty-second, that happened to us a couple years ago, and, and we're trying, you know, everybody's trying to figure out what's the best, best way to deal with it. And, you know, our, our challenge, and I think, you know, and I challenge a school board, I suspect we went around the table right now and asked opinions on the, on the proposed plan, everybody's going to have a different opinion on, on what the priority should be. But the reality of it is, is you're school board members, you're not city council, and that's not, that's not your job. Your job is to look this, this picture as a school board member and, and try to stay, we need to try to stay true to our, to our mission, which is to protect the taxpayer and protect our students and make sure we have what we need so that we can move forward in a, in a progressive way as well. Because, and we all know this, and the city knows this, Wallace Pajali knows this, Chamber of Commerce knows this, everybody knows this, if this city grows and the, and the school district can't keep up, and the school district suffers as a result, it has a negative impact on the city as a whole as well. You can't grow a great, wonderful city and have schools that don't meet the needs of the student body. And that's all got to be grown together, and that's a challenge. You know, how do we, how do we, going back to Paul's statement, we, all those, all those ships have to rise together, and, and nobody can afford to sink. And so, you know, our job, I believe, my job, Paul's job, the job of this school board is to take a, you know, take a step back, you know, any individual opinions you may have about proposed projects, you have to separate that and approach this from a school board member perspective, and, and leave the decision, that tough decision, related to this proposal and the TIF plan, to the city council, who's, who's ultimately responsible for that decision.
The other school districts that have been involved in some of these Wallace projects, have we contacted them to see if they've had any suggestions or solutions to help us get that revenue that we're going to be losing? They keep, you know, bringing up the Sugar Land one, the Waco one, well, those all have schools in them. Have we ventured out to see if they're doing anything that might be beneficial to us?
I've not, and I don't know if Paul has or not, but I think one of the things is different, and I, and I could be wrong on this, I don't know how much residential, existing residential...
And I think their taxes are different, but it still had to have an impact on their school district.
Texas, you know, Waco, you got Waco, you got, you got, you know, Baylor University in our backyard, you've got Sugar Land, which is a suburb of, basically a suburb of Houston. You know, our, our situation's unique, and I think that the, the work they did down there is going to be different. It may have the same impact, I mean, it might be worth a phone call.
I'm just curious if we...
We can do that, we can call down there and see if, you know, if they had any issues or if they, if anything came up, that, you know, how, how they've overcome any challenges may have surfaced, and we can make those calls.
Because when you listen to the presentation, they go into communities to help those communities grow, or I'm assuming they want families for growth.
Sure. Well, we asked Bill a question earlier tonight, visiting prior to the meeting, you know, have you ever, you know, what, what should we expect, you know, how does this compare to other TIFs? And he made the statement, every TIF is unique and has its unique challenges, and this is certainly a unique, unique situation in our case. And so, so I think that, you know, I think, I don't think it hurts to reach out, but we may not get any information, but we may get a nugget. So we'll, we'll make a phone call or two and see what we can come up with.
I know part of last night's discussion at the public information session, which was very useful, covered a lot of ground, but one of the questions was about jobs, are there going to be jobs coming from this TIF to support the residents that are coming because of the TIF to fill, you know, however many residences that we're going to have, five hundred, a thousand, whatever they're going to build? So people still have to pay their mortgage to buy those residences, and so there was, you know, a question on jobs, what kind of component is new jobs to this TIF redevelopment? So that was part of the discussion last night.
Anybody have any questions? Any more questions of Paul or Dr. Huff?
My last question. They said they could go up to fifteen percent of the TIF value, but they were only doing seven percent now. Does that mean they can come back and do another eight percent later? They said they could do fifty percent of the total project.
That, that, that was a reference to how much can the local TIF contribute toward a project and the state combined? And I guess statutory limit of the state of Missouri must be fifteen percent, does that sound right, Bill?
They said no more than fifteen percent can come from the TIF. And they're at seven percent now, does that mean they can add, add eight percent later?
That was a reference to last night, they, yeah, there's room, David Wallace mentioned that fifteen percent's the limit, and the Joplin TIF composition with five percent local TIF, meaning us, the county, city, and special roads are putting in five percent, and possibly another two percent from the state for their fifteen million dollar contribution on top of the forty-two million dollar local, adding up to fifty-seven million total state and local contribution. That adds up to five percent plus two is a seven percent. He's just saying the, the TIF plan is well under a fifteen percent threshold with the combined local and state participation.
I'm not certain where that, where that fifteen percent figure comes from. I don't believe there's actually a statutory limitation. I mean, I've certainly seen plans where, where there's been far more local contribution from the TIF for, for the, for the development. That could be a local city policy on the maximum amount that they would, they would approve. Many cities have, have adopted those, those kinds of policies to guide the city and to guide developers as they come forward with plans to, to let them know, you know, if you, if you need fifty percent assistance to make this work, don't ask, because our policy is fifteen percent. So I, that's more than likely where that, where that number is coming from. It's certainly not a statutory limitation.
And just to comment on, I think Dr. Huff mentioned the super TIF legislation, whether that's introduced and whether that's passed is a, is a question. I believe the, Bill, you've been over that legislation as it was drafted last year, that did not pass, but that's written to target disaster areas that might help Joplin and other communities that have disasters through the, a more targeted disaster-type state TIF?
Yes, it's, it's actually, there already is a, is a state TIF or super TIF already on the books in, in Missouri. And I think what, what this legislation does is it, it targets it, and I think it makes it maybe a little bit more accommodating for the local, those local areas that have been hit by a variety of disasters to access the state portion of the TIF, so they don't have to go through quite the same hoops that they would otherwise have to go through to qualify for eligibility.
And is the super, how's the super TIF affect the school district?
Well, at this point, it, it's unclear exactly how it would impact. I think the way that I understand the way the TIF plan is currently drafted is if there is a state TIF that is, that is approved for this, this project or this plan, that could be generated in a... an additional $15 million, I believe was the number. As I understand the plan, it would be then that they would do a $15 million of additional work for the, within the TIF area. So I don't know if, under that concept, I don't know that it would have any positive or negative impact on the school district. It would be the same.
But whether the super TIF legislation passes or not, am I correct that the state would have to approve participation even if that didn't pass, but there's existing general state statute out there that would be there to apply for, but that's a subject to, is that a legislative effort or is that a department?
It's an annual appropriation.
Okay. So the state, and that won't happen to either one of those until sometime after January, is that right?
On the new legislation.
Okay. But I'm not aware that the state's approved to date their participation in this yet. I'm not aware they have.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't even know if they've even filed an application.
So that's a state decision. They file, and the state says yes or no.
Okay.
On behalf of the board, for those that's watching us on TV tonight, and we're still live, there's been a lot of information that's been given to us, and as Paul and Dr. Huff both said, it changes every day. Paul, first of all, thank you for all your work that, you've kind of went out of your realm of work again, from being a real estate agent to being our CFO to one thing from another, and once again, we appreciate all the work that you've done for us. You know, as I tell the voters out there and everybody that's elected us in these positions, it's going to come down to the point that we're making a decision that's going to impact this district, not for next year, than years after, but many, many years to come. And, you know, we take this to heart. Every one of us that's sitting at this table take it to heart, as well as our staff and our superintendent, and Paul, and Angie, and, you know, it affects 7,000 of our kids, if not more, when we talk about enrollment. So, you know, when that decision comes down to what we as a board need to do, we do it for the benefit of our community and our taxpayers, and we, once again, to protect our children.
But ultimately, Randy, whatever we decide, whenever we decide, it is an opinion of this board.
Exactly right.
And the same thing for the TIF commission. It's an opinion.
It's an opinion.
And ultimately decided by the city council.
Yes.
So we can decide one way, and they can decide another. So we need to let the public know that, too.
Yeah.
And the TIF commission, as Mr. Land has pointed out, is a, it's an advisory panel, correct, Bill?
That's correct.
And they, there is a process that that advisory panel serves, is an important part of this process, that the city council can draw from the exchanges and discussions had on that panel, and when that vote is cast, that's an advisory vote that the city council can honor or not be bound to that advisory vote. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's a recommendation. There's an 11-member advisory board. We have two seats on that advisory board. The county has two seats, Special Road District has a seat, and the other six are city-appointed seats. So six of the, six of the 11 are city-appointed, five of them are taxing districts that are appointed, and we'll be asked at some point in time to make a decision on behalf of this district and raise our hand one way or the other related to this particular proposal. So...
But out of that commission board, we're the largest at stake, losing revenue of anybody else that sits on that.
What percentage is our revenue? What percentage do we have?
Local. Is it 60% Paul, local revenue?
In the TIF? I think it's, I think it's closer to 77%.
No, you mean overall?
Overall.
What's the school district, what percentage of the TIF, those taxes go back to the school district?
Well, there's...
My boy in my ass.
No, 100% of the taxes that a taxpayer pays, a certain percentage would go to the roads, a certain percentage would go, what percentage goes to the schools?
77% of the total level.
So we would be the largest.
It's Joplin schools.
So we would be funding 77% of that TIF.
In fairness, we don't have any local sales tax involved here, as the city does and the county, but in terms of the property levy, which is really the big driver on this, we're 77% of that levy, so therefore, we're the biggest.
Yeah, we're the largest.
And we don't, we have any other source of revenue?
No.
Well, we do have, we have federal, state.
State and federal.
That's a great, that's a great point.
What, we're 60, what percent of our revenue is local, 63%?
That's around 60, 62%.
62, 63%.
So of our total budget revenue, or whatever, that we receive, monies that we receive...
Local property taxes.
63% comes from tax, from property taxes. Okay.
Is that right, Paul?
That may be with the, I think the prop seed we get from the state of Missouri, which comes back to all districts based on enrollment, I think that's counted as local. So in terms of local levy, I believe the slide I showed at the October board meeting, which, by the way, laid out these two issues at the October board meeting, and we knew these upfront, by the third week of October, these two challenges, they were presented to the board in that meeting. And you saw during that slideshow that local tax levy revenue was the biggest driver of our budget, revenue to our budget, as well as, you also saw a multi-year picture of our fund balances, which basically are leveled at 25% of our annual operating expenses. Every June 30th, at the end of our year, we have around 25% of funding left over to start the next year with. But because that's leveled year in and year out, that says we're not taking in more money than we need, we're not spending deficit funds, we're spending pretty much every dollar that comes in and maintaining a steady balance of 25%. So that, the revenue that was pointed out, the local revenue is very, very important to the district, and yes, we're by far the biggest total level.
Yeah, thank you. Are you supposed to cast your vote on November 30th, or did we, for the tax commission?
Well, that's, you know, one of the things, and I apologize again, this is a very short amount of time to be making decisions, and we just got information this evening that we haven't had a chance to process, so it's not fair to you guys for me, you know, calling meetings, dropping the hat, to, you know, to address these issues as they come up, because it changes sometimes our, you know, certainly day by day at this point, but sometimes hour by hour. And so, you know, one of the options we have in this, you know, it'd be nice to have a little more time, and we need a little more time to analyze this and spend some time looking at the numbers. The proposal that was, that was discussed today, a lot of numbers were thrown at us. You know, we want to make sure that we're doing what's best for the district, but again, not asking for too much. I mean, we're not, we're not trying to be greedy in this scenario, we just need to be made whole. That's all we've asked since day one. We've been having this conversation for a long time, that whatever happens, you know, we've got to be made whole in this picture. And they're trying, and they're trying really hard, but every dollar they put towards us to make us whole takes away, obviously, you know, maybe five or 10-fold in opportunities for the city to do some of the projects that they want to do. So it's a real challenge. And, you know, we want to fully analyze the information that we're receiving, even as of today, so we can process and make the best recommendation we can to the school board on behalf of the school district and our children, so that we can lay our head on a pillow tonight and feel good about the decisions we're making. So, tonight, I don't have a recommendation for you. I don't feel comfortable giving you a recommendation.
I mean, when are you supposed to, when's the deadline for you to go?
The public hearing is November 30th. It's this Friday. The, what could happen, and it depends on the message, you know, we have two seats on that board, the message you want us to deliver, you know, what I would prefer is if we could have continuance and delay this, delay action of the TIF commission, potentially to give us an opportunity to analyze these numbers, ask more questions, and come to consensus, as opposed to being rushed. Right now, I mean, quite frankly, we've been rushed up to this point. Jeff was in the meeting yesterday, and he can see, we went a long ways yesterday, we made a lot of progress yesterday, and, but there's still a lot hanging out there that we've got to, we've got to get the loose ends tied up here, and I don't think we can get it done between now and Friday. This is Tuesday.
So you're supposed to vote on Friday?
We're supposed to vote on Friday. Right now, the TIF commission hearing, public hearing is Friday.
So a public comment means vote? I thought it was just another...
They would like to have that, because of the timeline.
Okay.
They would like to have that vote made on Friday. I don't know that I'll be comfortable raising my hand one way or the other as a TIF commission member on Friday without some clear direction from the school board, and I'm not ready to give, I don't have enough information at this point for you guys to make a good informed decision. And, you know, a wise board member once told me that, don't expect me to support an issue unless, if you bring something to me in the final hour. And that's an important point, I think, and I certainly don't want to bring something to you guys that we're not ready to, ready to bring to the table.
Yeah, just that was the request that came from CJ and Paul to me was, hey, let's see if we can work out a cooperative agreement through with the city so that we're on the front end of TIF planning and preparations, you know, so that we don't get into the time crunch. And the city has worked very, I mean, to my knowledge, the city's been, you know, trying to work with us on all of our issues, but the cooperative agreement early on, before the TIF was being proposed, wasn't as a high priority.
Wouldn't make it feel quite so pressured right now, is my point, is just that we really did try to take that proactive approach, and it's difficult, and they're in a difficult situation, and dropping lots of things every day to dig in and try to do this, and I just think it's important, you know, that they've both done it.
A comment was made, you know, not long ago, the city council knows city business, the school knows school business, and that's where we're at. I mean, that's, boils down to the point that they're trying to make the right choices as well as we are, too, at the end of the day. We're going to adjourn until 7:00. We will come back live at 7:00. Meeting adjourned.